We can have a moment of silence to keep in our thoughts and prayers all our military, law enforcement, all our first responders always return home safe. Thank you. Plenage?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this public meeting has been published in the Home News Tribune, Courier-News, and Star-Ledger newspapers, and posted on the Middlesex County website, as well as on the bulletin board in the Middlesex County Administration Building at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting, which shall be entered into the minutes of this meeting.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Here.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner Koppel? County Commissioner McCollum?
Here.
County Commissioner Nara?
Here.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Here.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Here. Tonight we will have a presentation of the, an introduction of the 2025 budget. At this time, I have some comments that I'd like to make. Members of the Middlesex County Board of County Commissioners, our workforce, and residents, good evening. Tonight, I'm proud to introduce the 2025 Middlesex County Operating Budget. This budget is a testament to our county's unwavering commitment to serving our residents and businesses. Through meticulous financial management, Middlesex County has consistently operated with fiscal prudence, providing the highest quality services at the lowest possible cost, and reducing taxpayer burden while maximizing return on investment. With the proposed net-to-be-raised-by-taxation for 2025 of approximately $503 million, we produce an overall county purpose tax rate of .319. This is a value that is not only a reduction from the prior year, but one that hasn't been reached in over a decade. This number expresses a lower proportional amount of taxation to be raised relative to the growth of the assessed valuation of Middlesex County as a whole. We attribute this to our focus and investment in economic development and fostering capital infrastructure. Our sustainable spending practices have enabled us to reduce debt, build cash reserves, and invest our resources wisely. This is evident through the reduction of nearly $20 million of debt and the growth of our surplus to $113.5 million. This budget is not just a set of numbers. It is a reflection of our priorities, our values, and our commitment to the people we serve here in Middlesex County. Moreover, the 2025 budget reflects our ongoing efforts to navigate the challenges of the rising cost of living and inflation. Despite these external factors, we have allocated funds to critical areas that will improve the lives of our residents now and well into the future. One such area is infrastructure development, where our commitment is evident in the allocation of nearly $90 million to our capital improvement fund. This program will finance essential projects such as road improvements, bridge repairs, park enhancements, park enhancements, facility upgrades, information technology infrastructure, and asset lifecycle management solutions. In fact, over the past ten years, the county has invested over half a billion dollars in roadways, bridges, parks, and buildings, all while over that same period, reducing our overall debt and debt service payments. But our investments in infrastructure go beyond these ongoing necessities to include transformative, future-forward investments designed to drive economic growth and improve our residents' quality of life for years to come. Our Community Innovation and Opportunity Strategic Investment Plan is a prime example. The CIO Strategic Investment Plan will reimagine the Middlesex College campus into a regional destination for academics, athletics, the arts, and entertainment, all while bringing tremendous opportunities to our regional businesses. A project of this scale would not be possible without the county's strong fiscal foundation. Our steadfast AAA bond rating for over twenty-four years by the world's foremost credit agencies allows us to build this new, exciting destination on Middlesex College campus without incurring additional debt. Our vision in building a better future is led by innovation, enhancing operational efficiency, and empowering our decision-making processes at every turn. In the coming weeks, we will continue to engage in a thorough analysis of each program and expense. We will explore all avenues to ensure that we meet the evolving needs of our residents and businesses. I extend my sincere gratitude to our County Commissioner Wes and Koppel, our dedicated finance chair, the entire Board of County Commissioners, our exceptional county workforce, and our county administration for their relentless efforts in developing this budget. With that, I invite our county's Chief Financial Officer, Nicholas Jukulinski, to provide an overview of the 2025 Middlesex County Budget. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Director, for giving off the 2025 introduction of the budget. Prior to moving forward with the presentation, I would like to take a moment to recognize a number of individuals who not only contribute to the annual budget cycle, but that play by the law within the analysis category. Lisa L. Boss with Budget Director, Gabe Cookie, our Controller, Samuel Chichik, Jasmine Green, and Kayne the Hickey, two of our top financial controllers. I also want to recognize the continuous support and direction from the Board of Commissioners, Furthermore Finance Chair Leslie Koppel, Director Rios, and last but not least, Administrator John Paul Rehna. When looking at the core segments of our 2025 operating budget relative to 2024, we'll see a series of increases and decreases. Under the main section of expenses, we'll see an increase of 9.29 for salary wages. This amount is primarily attributed to the anticipated negotiated wage increases set forth between the government body and the various unions. Total other expenses, we'll see an increase of 18.9, a value that is driven by mandated and contractual expenditures. Further slides will describe this increase in further detail along with our operating revenues. Grants with a reduction of 1.5, it's important to note that this value is subject to timing restrictions. Ultimately, this number only reflects the grants that are portioned in the introduced budget. Throughout the remainder of the year, this value will be restored by Chapter 159 amendments. And in total, on an annual basis, we recognize upwards of $60 million in both grant expenditures and revenues. As our historic trends show, we will maximize the use of grants and maintain all operations funded fee grants. The net of all our expenses show an increase overall of $26.6 million, or $618.8 million. Shifting to our revenues, we will once again anticipate $10 surplus to be realized. Operating revenues will see a respectable increase of $4.5 million. Special items revenue of $700,000, and grants reflects its expense counterpart, a reduction of $1.5 million. The net of our revenues is an increase of $3.7 overall, or $115.4 million in total. Reducing our expenses by our total anticipated revenue, we generate a net-to-be-raised taxation of $503.4 million, or an overall increase of .2.8 million. This in turn generates the county purpose tax rate of .319, a slight reduction from the year 2001. And while minimal in nature, our county purpose tax rate has been consistently reducing itself year-over-year, and the value of .319 has not been matched since 2012. As shown in the prior slide, Middlesex anticipates approximately $18.9 million in increase to our operating expenses. This is composed of our mandated expenses, an increase amount of $12.4. Common examples would include our health insurance, pensions, social security. We see a dramatic increase in our capital improvement fund, also commonly referred as pay-as-you-go in the amount of $10 million. This line item will be further described in greater detail later in this presentation and the significance it brings to Middlesex. Operational expenses, in the amount of $9.4. We continue to combat the increased prices of services and goods as a result of high inflation. Examples such as energy costs and vehicle pricing continue to be at all-time highs alongside contractual obligation increases such as food and medical services provided at our adult corrections facility. Our last key increase is to our education agencies, in the amount of $1.3 million. This represents our commitment and belief that education leads to a stronger community. These values net to an increase total of $33.1 million. When shifting to the decreases, we will see a paydown on notes, reduction of $10 million. Additionally, debt service in the amount of $4.2 million. Both capital nature, these decreases reflect Middlesex's commitment to decreasing overall debt and reinvesting it into the budget for a more sustainable capital outlook. Decreases in total, $14.2, and when netted against the $33.1, it gives the aforementioned increase to operating expenses of $18.9. Jumping to the opposite side of the budget spectrum for revenues, we also have the key drivers of the county optional hospital fee program, in the amount of $5.4. This is a program that supports local hospitals and ensures that they continue to provide the necessary services and funding for residents, by the likes of additional fees on acute care, that increases a result of recent state legislative changes increasing the amount of fees counties may assess under the program. Interest in investments and deposits, in the increased amount of $1.9, or an overall budget appropriation of $11.6. This is a value that is maximized by actively working with our banking institutions to ensure that we receive the highest available market rates. This stream of revenue is particularly important as it helps supplement other revenues during tougher economic times. The net increase is $7.3. On the decrease side of things, we will have a reduction of $1.5 for medical insurance and dividends. This is a reflection of more conservative budgeting, and a reduction of $600,000 for our premium sound bonds and banks. A byproduct of the capital bond issuance, the reduction will proceed as negative, this is actually a result of calling out for less bonding. PTO revenues will decrease, net to the decrease of $2.1, and in turn, calculated to the $5.2 referenced on the first slide. In short, this overall increase will help offset the amount to be raised by taxation. As iterated earlier in the presentation, Middlesex puts a high value on grant funding and shows consistent aggressiveness in maintaining, adding, or replacing grant funding. Over the last ten years, we've seen upwards of $600 million reoccurring in federal, state, and local grants. We primarily attribute this to establishing new grant management relationships, such as Millennium Strategies, a grant-specific consult firm with extensive knowledge and expertise related to all public and private funding opportunities. Increased dedicated resources, our public government affairs team has done an absolutely amazing job in supplementing the steadily growing grants division of finance. And last but not least, being proactive versus reactive, incorporating practices to understand how existing operations are funded fee grants, and analyzing external factors that could impact levels as imperative. Shifting here towards capital investments, Middlesex County will invest more than $87.6 million in 2025 for critical capital projects. This dollar value represents specifically the budget appropriations in the capital improvement fund line item. This is used for our general capital expenditures such as infrastructure, education, technology, so on and so forth. As mentioned by the Director, the capital improvement fund has not only allowed us to invest greater than half a billion over the course of the last ten years, it has done so in a sustainable fashion. Establishing a concentrated attack on reducing debt around ten years ago, the vehicle of the capital improvement fund has provided us the ability to transition from conventional bond issuances, reduce administration costs, generate savings by eliminating interest on lower funding, and the need to carry debt year-over-year. Directly correlated with the steady increase in the capital improvement fund over the last decade, Middlesex has seen a dramatic reduction in our overall funded debt. The natural progression for any government agency, especially over the course of an extended period of time, is to increase in total. Through over ten consecutive years of decreases, Middlesex has gone from approximately $400 million in funded debt to approximately $160 million, an overall reduction of $240, and a value that has been more than halved. Both the remaining debt and the overall reduction are numbers to be exceptionally proud of, and are a result of consistently following a deliberate plan to eliminate both debt and the taxpayer benefits. When looking at the analysis of our annual debt service payments, the annual appropriation to pay down unfunded debt, we see a very similar trend. Highlighting the fiscal year of 2015, we see an all-time high of over $90 million. Fast forward into 2025, we have a budget appropriation of only $46 million. Over the time period displayed, we have seen a reduction of $47 million between principal interest, a value that is just under 50% of annual savings. With Middlesex reaching the $50 million mark, we set a new target goal of $40 million. This is anticipated to be reached in the next two to three years. The current budget amount of $46 million is a number that has been reached in over twenty four years, and it furthermore matches the same benchmark of our funded debt over ten consecutive years of reductions. To help further draw out the correlation between the capital improvement fund and the savings in annual debt service payments, the following graph iterates our debt service progress and how it can be directly attributed to the capital improvement fund. The red line representing our capital improvement fund, solidified by our prior slides graph of annual debt service, we can undoubtedly confirm the inverse relationship between the two topics. When compared to the other twenty counties in New Jersey, Middlesex achieves the number one spot as far as amount of appropriations. Our innovative mindset is significant because it creates a recurring line item that prevents us from having to issue bonds and tie up growth within the taxation. In simple terms, our capital expenditures at this point are almost entirely budgeted within our overall budget and not raised externally, that in turn would impact operating budgets for literally decades. The consistent growth of the capital improvement fund over the ten years has only been successful due to controlled and deliberate spending. An entity's administration and board commissioners' line item on reducing debt isn't always prioritized nor even understood. Additionally, our offices who spend the significant portions of capital funding, such as our engineering and transportation, are well-structured and communicate effectively. Each year, anticipated projects and needs are established, allowing us to spend and grow the fund without having to set place any capital projects or expenditures. And one last way to demonstrate the tremendous reduction in debt service and how it drastically affects our economy to grow other operations is by viewing it as a percentage of the overall budget. By reducing the percentage allocated to debt service, we grow the ability to budget for other services and reduce taxation. Within the ten-year timeframe, the debt service ratio has been cut to more than two-thirds. In 2015, we sold 23%, meaning that for every $1 taxation raised, 23 cents of it would be allocated to debt service. In 2020, 14%, 2025, 7%, and by 2030, we strike that equal to or less than 3% of the annual budget allocated to debt service payments. And one last key component of any capable government agency is the surplus fund balance level. Since embarking on a mission in 2010 to build our surplus, Middlesex has increased our appropriation by over $100 million, or an increase of over 1,000%. With a balance of $113 million, we achieve a surplus ratio, a value that measures the surplus relative to the gross operating budget of 18%. This surpasses the base ratio of 15% set forth by the bond rating agencies. The ability to not only match but to exceed the recommended surplus ratio demonstrates a highly covered benchmark and indicates finances are effectively being managed, thus further strengthening our longstanding AAA bond rating. That concludes my presentation for the introduction of the 2025 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to your team, and all the departments that were involved in the budget process. I think we started this back in August, we started working on the budget. And it's not an easy task, I'm sure, and I just want to say thank you on behalf of the board for your hard work and dedication to all the employees as well. At this time, I open up the meeting to the public on Resolutions 234 and 235. If anybody has any comments or questions? Is there a second?
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. At this time, the clerk will read the summary of the proposed budget.
Total of general appropriations for 2025 is $618,855,000 for 2024, $633,365,585 less anticipated revenues for 2025, $115,417,362 for 2024, $152,816,388. Amount to be raised by taxation, county purpose tax for 2025, $503,437,638 for 2024, $480,549,197.
Thank you. Is there a motion to introduce the 2025 budget?
Motion is, yes.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. For complete county budget notice?
Annual budget of the county of Middlesex for fiscal year 2025, be it resolved by the following statements of regular appropriations that constitute the county budget for the year 2025, be it further resolved by the summary of said budget, will be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of the March 9, 2025 edition. The Board of County Commissioners of the county of Middlesex does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year 2025. Notices hereby given that the budget and tax resolution was approved by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Middlesex on March 20, 2025. The hearing on the budget and tax resolution will be held at the County Administration Building, 75 Bayer Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, on March 20 at 6:30 p.m., at which time please objections to said budget and tax resolution for the 2025 may be presented by taxpayers or other.
Correspondents?
Each Commissioner has been provided with a list of correspondence received by the clerk's office in our last meeting. This correspondence will be kept on file and will also be preserved with the Board of Commissioners.
Is there a motion to accept the correspondence?
Motion to approve.
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Minutes of the regular meeting held on Thursday, February 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
President Banabon.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Has it not been? Okay, ordinances. Introduction in first reading. The clerk will read orders number 478.
Bond issuance providing to various 2025 capital improvements and equipment acquisitions in by and for the county of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating the aggregate amount of $87,600,000, therefore authorizing issuance of $16,761,904 in bonds or notes for the county to finance part of the cost thereof, and authorizing a public hearing to be held on Thursday, March 6, 2025, at 6:30 p.m., and authorizing publication thereof.
Is there a motion to approve? Orders 478 on first reading.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Kessel, any resolutions to be added?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be forwarded?
There are none.
At this time, I open up the meeting to the public on all the resolutions listed on the agenda. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Charlie Cradaville from McMansville, editor of McMansville Today, community news outlet, covering the central Jersey area, and reporting tonight's meeting for the public. Page four, 242. Can you tell me a little bit about the $1.5 million expense for, I guess this is AV equipment, audiovisual equipment in different buildings?
This is part of our lifecycle management of all of our technology. We make investments in capital dollars towards the technology, specifically to equipment that's needed for example, the fire academy, for the training center, for our conference rooms, for meetings, and that money goes to support those marches.
Okay, so the $1.5 million would be for all over different facilities, including this building here? How about the cameras in this room, or the equipment in this room for video conferencing?
They exist.
I'm aware. I'm asking if that would be replaced as part of this, or?
No.
No, they're new, right? Okay. Yeah, I just think if you're spending $1.5 million on AV equipment to do video conferencing, there's no good reason that this can't be video conferencing, and the public couldn't contribute via remote access. I think it is possible in this room, correct?
Talking about the resolutions, Charlie.
Yeah, for IT equipment, for AV equipment.
It's about the purchases of the equipment.
And I heard that we already have good equipment here, so I suggest you use it. That's the point I'm trying to make. There's no good reason that you don't have remote access to these meetings.
Thank you.
Move on to Code Blue, Perth Amboy 267. I'm very interested in Code Blue. I see 172,000 going towards it. Can you tell me the?
267?
Yes, 25-267R. As for, I guess, the season that we're in now, a warming center. Can I just get some information on capacity, hours of operation, any success of the program or statistics you can share?
I don't have any of those with me, Charlie, but I can get them for you. They do it in, they open up their Olive Street Center, which is also their community center.
The Jay Faski Center?
Yes, they set it up every night, and they take it down every morning. They partner with the Y of Rattan Bay Y to provide programming and services to the clients, and they use a lot of donations to fund food and for individuals. But I believe it's 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., but I'm not positive. I can give, I'll be now you got the specifics.
I really like that, and just on the, you know, the money, can you tell me maybe the big items or the big categories of what the spending is on, the staff, the city staff?
The spending is security, so that's city staff that do that, city police officers. But then it's the contract that they have with the Rattan Bay Y MCA in terms of doing the, running the programming. And then it's just the facility cost in terms of cleaning.
Thank you. Appreciate it, and yeah, I'll speak a little more about Code Blue later on tonight, and I think those were, oh, one more, Lyondale Basell 315R. Can you tell me about this grant for emergency management and preparedness? I believe this is a chemical company in Edison.
Yes, Charlie, this is a grant that comes through and came in for equipment specific to that corporation, came into our hands with their team. If you want to follow up, I'll have the chief of morale quick something to send it off to you.
I'd be interested, and just to confirm, this is the same company that had the, I guess, a release of toxic chemical air, in the air, toxic cloud, a couple years ago, right?
So this is, the facility is located next, you know, off of Metal Road. We can get you further details on what the release was, or has been released currently.
Right, right, I just wanted to understand, because that was a situation that I think shined a light on emergency management in a serious way, and information wasn't shared as quickly as it should have been, and yeah, concerned about that facility. I'm glad they're chipping in 20 grand for the county to do something, and I look forward to learning more about it, but yeah, just, you know, proceed with caution with this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else in the public?
Motion to approve.
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Okay, does anyone have to call on anything separate? I do, I, number 25-284.
I do, Director, 25-250.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Kessel?
The record motion would then be in order to adopt a consent agenda consisting of Resolution Number 25-234, the Resolution 25-322, excluding Resolutions Number 25-234 and Resolution 25-235, which was previously voted upon, and excluding Resolutions 25-284 and Resolution 25-250 to be voted upon separately.
Is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
Yes.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes.
And now, Director, we appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by Commissioner Kenny, and that's Resolution 25-250.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioner Ascona Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny?
President Banabon.
County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Director Rios?
Yes.
Now finally, we appropriate to consider the resolution excluded by the Director, and that's Resolution 25-250. that's resolution 25-284.
Motion carries?
Second.
Ball call?
County Commissioner Asko de Barber?
Yes.
County Commissioner Kenny? County Commissioner McCollum?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Tamara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Raverio?
Has it not voted? At this time, I open up the meeting to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charlie Cradaville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. Before I get into the issues I want to talk about, may I ask, why did Mr. Kenny abstain on 250?
I'm a member of the American Irish Association.
Got it. And Director, why did you abstain on 284?
Just at the point of order, it's not necessary for them to answer that without a pardon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you don't have to. You can, but you don't have to.
Because I know someone.
You know someone who's getting a contract? Okay. And may I ask what the contract is? What is this board?
Like I said, I don't have to answer that. I'm confused myself.
Okay, then you can answer it, Mr. Kelso, or Mr. Paul Mina can answer it. Let's not. I mean, what contract, what is the contract, 284?
It's on the agenda, Charlie.
Leasing of county-owned property. Where's the property?
I'm going to have to answer.
Can anyone tell me where the property is that this board just agreed to lease? Director, can you refer the question to anyone who knows the answer?
As Mr. Kelso said, you don't have to answer the question, okay? What we can do is we do typically on resolutions, and we'll provide the answer for you.
Right.
Obviously, it's not any one particular person here that can answer it, so we'll provide it to you, which is routinely, Charlie, when an answer is immediately available to you.
And this is very strange.
Well, it's not strange. You're just trying to make, make a big issue with the fact that the Director recused himself. He's not going to answer the question. The other commissioners can't answer it immediately. We're going to have staff provide the answer to you, which is what we do every time. So let's not grandstand with what you're trying to do. That's the answer you're getting, you're not getting another one.
To be clear, I did not get the answer. I don't even know what, I do not even?
Tonight, there was another question that you had, and some of our staff didn't have the answer, and they said they'll get back to you, and they'll provide you with the answer. So that, it's the same thing. It's not the first time, as Mr. Kelso stated there, Charlie.
Of course. The issue is that the resolution's already been approved. And so the county has leased some land, and I guess the other members of the board don't know what land you've leased. What municipality?
Just maybe they didn't know the hours of the Perth Amboy facility. We're going to get you the answer, Charlie. The commissioners are not going to know every fact on every resolution. You know that. You've been here for years. You're just trying to grandstand, and I'm not going to allow them to answer it. You're going to get your answer from staff after this meeting.
Okay, so someone the Director knows got a contract tonight. The members of the board who voted to do that contract, unless somebody can correct me here, didn't know what land we're talking about. Didn't know where it is, what town it's in. Is it in the parks? Is it, is it? What?
We're going to give you the full information for, and?
Including, including who it is.
Yeah. Absolutely. Whoever is under that contract, you're going to get the information.
All right, I'll look forward to it.
You're just not getting it now.
I'll look forward to it. I'm just troubled that nobody knows, and, you know, we'll follow up. I did want to say thank you to Nick for the presentation and to the whole team that puts together the budget. I must say, it's really good to have that information and to know that the county has strong fiscal health and is moving in the right direction when it comes to that aspect. And I think it shines a light on the fact that the county's in a better position than most to solve some of the big problems we're facing. Problems like homelessness, problems like the rash of deaths on our roadways. And I really want to encourage the county to think big and to tackle those problems in a much more comprehensive way that brings more people to be involved. I noticed with the Code Blue situation, there's been a lot of disconnect between New Brunswick and the county. It's great that we're getting some funds to do Code Blue, but we need so much more. Just look around.
Anyone else in the public? Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Aramis Rosario. Unfortunately, I don't feel safe giving the address. Are you familiar with the Mr. Williams?
What city do you live?
I don't feel safe giving that information considering the magnitude of what I'm about to express. On December 5, 2019, I stood before the Danford Holding Meeting. I listened to Shanti Naras speak on behalf of her committee and extended a hand of false hope, asking me to stay after the meeting, yet she did nothing. Did nothing, excuse me. Today, I'm going to just express the facts. I just thought that was important, that it's been a number of years, including, not excluding, I was nearly ran over by the same individuals who happen to be law enforcement and protected on a continuous basis. This is so sad. So if anyone wants to look up December 5 of 2019, it's on the record. I was in a better place than I am now, but here I am. Before I begin, let me just start here. Board members, citizens of the county, I stand before you as not someone seeking vengeance, but as someone who has been profoundly wronged, wronged by the very system meant to protect and serve. A system I once trusted, a system you all sworn to uphold. I trusted you, and in return, I was met with silence, with neglect, with retaliation, and most painfully with the reality of a system that feels broken beyond repair. When I came to this board meeting on December 5, 2019, for the first time, because I didn't know where else to go, I came like the pains, my pleas, and my suffering. I was promised action specifically by Shanti Naras and of course by Prosecutor Cooperay. That didn't happen. Here we are, years later, and still not a word after reaching out, coming to these offices, and getting threatened. Years and years, just asking to speak to the public so I can express what I've been going through, completely neglected. Silence cost me dearly, silence from the prosecutor's office, silence from this office, including, not excluding, the attorney Williams, who, we'll leave that in case, that's another story. But Attorney Williams, on behalf of this county and represents this, I guess, this building, S. Williams, Michael, S. Williams, S. White. Like I said, the silence has cost me dearly. It stripped me of my peace, confidence, and belief. I once held in this system meant to protect us all. It has left me not only to bear the weight of these injustices, but to fight against the very institutions that should have been my allies. I lived a life of struggle from childhood. I have fought through adversity, learned to stand tall despite the odds stacked against me. Today, despite everything, I'm proud of who I am, but I should not have to fight alone. The evidence, the tapes, the footage, the proof, since untouched, unreviewed, I assure you, what I'm speaking is factual. As soon as someone takes one glance at it, it would... Everything I've said since the past nine years plus have been accurate and true. From the borough to the county to the state and to the federal level, I have everything. I'm here not to seek revenge. I'm not, I'm not here to demand what has already been promised to me. I'm here to offer extraordinary, something extraordinary, something that cost me dearly but gives me the freedom to move forward. I forgive you. I forgive you all. Not because you deserve it, but because I refuse to let your neglect and silence define you. I forgive you because I believe in the power of accountability and the hope for change. I forgive you because my story might prevent someone else's loved one from enduring what I have. This is not a call for sympathy. This is a plea for action. A plea for reform, a plea for a future where every person, regardless of who they are, who they know, is seen and heard and valued. Let my forgiveness be a reminder to you, not just for me, but for the countless others who will follow me. Those who will walk in these chambers, who will look at you for justice and find none, let this moment, my words, and my pain be the catalyst for change. I forgive you, but in that forgiveness, forgiveness lies a challenge, a call to action to accountability to ensure that the systems you oversee, all oversee, no longer betray those that are meant to serve. My name is Aramis Rosario, and I forgive you and I thank you all for your time. Have a blessed year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public?